Okay. Good evening and welcome to the first boardman in January and welcome to those people that are following us on too. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hongkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and seated territories we teach, learn and live. And recognition of visitors. We have three and from our Richmond Teachers Association. And welcome to the three of you in the gallery. I'm President Jason. I'm Brooke Douglas. Oh, sorry. Brooke Douglas from Learning Services, not the RTA. Anyway, we'll move on. Announcements from trustees. Are the announcements trustee Larson?
Thank you, trustee DeBoni. Black History Month. Every February, people in Canada are invited to participate in Black History Month festivities and events that honor the legacy of Black Canadians and their communities. Our school district will celebrate the many achievements of Black Canadians who throughout history have created greatly to make Canada the culturally diverse, compact and prosperous nation it is today. Our schools will actively engage in learning opportunities directly related to Black History Month and will share their learning on their school websites and social media so the wider community can live and celebrate together. Black History Month opens the door not only to conversations about the significant contributions of Black Canadians, but also to the impacts of racism and our commitment to make the Richmond School District as a safe and respectful place for all members of our community. Thank you.
Need other? Steve Wong.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four announcements month. We've regarding the twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four annual but will be accepted. Our peers told notice at the February twenty-second, twenty-nine and April twenty-sixth. Twenty-twenty-three regularly take the board. Please note that budget updates will be made available on the budget website. All budgets feedback will be considered by the board as of the budget process which is anticipated to be completed by twenty-twenty-two.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chairperson DeBoni. This week, members of the Chinese, Vietnamese and other East and Southeast Asian communities celebrate the Lunar New Year, one of the most celebrated celebrations in lunar calendar. Lunar New Year, also known as Chinese Year or Spring Festival, is a time for families to come together, exchange gifts and traditional foods. The celebration is steeped in ancient traditions, including lighting of fireworks, lion and dragon dances, and the giving of envelopes. Lunar New Year is also an opportunity to highlight the many past and current contributions of Chinese, Korean, Vietnamese and other East and Southeast Asian communities who have helped make our country better, fairer and more. These communities have played a vital role in shaping our diverse cultural landscape and continue to contribute to our economic, social and political fabric. Richmond School District wishes all a happy and prosperous Lunar New Year. May the new year bring good luck, health and prosperity to all those who are celebrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Yang and Trustee Hamaguti.
National Holocaust Remembrance Day. The twenty-seventh marks the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz-Burkina-Khana as International Holocaust Remembrance Day. On this annual day of commemoration, Richmond School District makes tribute to the memory of the victims of the Holocaust. The district is committed to supporting those who identify as being part of the Jewish faith and will continue to develop educational programs that help prevent anti-Semitism, racism and other foreign tolerance. The public is invited to join the Vancouver Holocaust Education Center for a recorded commemorative event from Vancouver City Hall on Friday, June twenty-seventh, 1:32 PM by visiting www.vhcc.org.
Okay. Moving on. I don't think the recognition, the land recognition. I will do that now. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the First Peoples of the Hongkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and seated territories we teach, learn and live. And we definitely do not want to forget to recognize that. Madam Secretary, Treasurer, any materials that aren't included in?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairperson. All information recorded for this meeting has been posted on the district's website.
And adoption of the agenda. I think the agenda is complete. It just needs a mover and secorder. So moved by trustee Wong, seconded by trustee Larson. All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Motion's the agenda's adopted. There aren't any presentations to special recognitions. Brief. Questions from the public? I always forward to President of the RTA. Baver Starvsky.
Good evening and thank you. And my questions actually relate to the minutes because looking ahead to the next meeting and really what they're all about is the current operating grants, special purpose funds and wondering what happened on December fifteenth? I know about CEF, the Classroom Enhancement Fund was actually part of the Finance and Bill Meeting, but I actually don't know what it was as terms of the operating grants and the special purpose funds. And I know in February where you'd be passing an amended budget. And normally, in at least the past few years, there's a BOG meeting in early January. So we get an update of that information and some early projections. I know it's early, but it does help us when we're looking ahead to creating briefs. And so what we're always looking for at this point in the year is suggestions for enhancements. So those are my questions. It is what happened on December fifteenth? And is there a place to provide input on the amended budget? Or maybe there's nothing been put on, but those really are my questions and they are out of the last minute. Thanks.
Secretary Treasurer Wang, maybe you can?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairperson. Thank you, Ms. Baverstock, for your question. So yeah, for December fifteenth, operating budget, we have received have received the Richmond School District, we received the enrollment thing from the ministry. And that is, as you know, we have experienced a significant enrollment growth this year in September. So the total of operating funding based on the enrollment growth is about seven point five million dollars. So everything else in terms of special purpose grants, the majority of the special purpose grants, of course, CEF, and we have received the all the things that we requested. So those are all good news. You know, the only thing we have not received, the provincial estimate, is the provincial settlement funding. So that is a, I would say it's a late announcement this year. It's a norm. Normally, this time of the year, we wouldn't receive all the funding announcements. So that's the only thing that we're still looking for. With that piece of funding, it's the accounting treatment or accounting standard, accounting reporting requirement is different. You know, if we don't see the revenue, we can't record. So that's the only thing that's holding us up on the amended budget. But we don't, as of today, we don't have a complete financial status for already amended budget. That's why. But it is a really good feedback. So we will go back and consider maybe add another BOG meeting in February.
Great. And Q, it sounds like I didn't miss something. So I appreciate that answer. It's very helpful.
And there is a BOG meeting, February?
March, March ninth, yes, BOG meeting, meeting is March ninth.
Thank you. Augusty Advisory Working Group. Okay. Okay. The community communication. And our executive for Lieutenant Robinson.
Great. Thank you, Chairperson. Just one quick date before I give a presentation around the district. And I would turn things over to Secretary Treasurer for that update, please.
Yeah, thank you, Sir Robinson. So the education has made the decision to appoint PFM Executive Search to facilitate the recruitment process of next superintendent of the planned timeline is to complete their entire recruitment process by May. The board values the stakeholders' input in the selection process. There will be opportunities for stakeholders to be involved in this process. Specifically, in this process, at the end of January, PFM will facilitate a meeting for stakeholder representatives and key representatives to discuss the different aspects of the superintendent role, which those discussions will inform the finalization of the executive profile. The next opportunity for stakeholder amendment is the end of April, PFM will facilitate a meeting for stakeholder representatives and trustee representatives to interview the final analyst candidates prior to the board and their final decision. So yeah, this is a quick update on superintendent recruitment process. Back to you, superintendent.
Great, great. Thank you. So as always, lots of amazing things going on around the district over the last month. Always very, very cool to be able to share. So we'll start with active kindness. Two students from secondary with the help of their vice principal, supervising teacher, organizing a pickleball event to raise money for the Canadian Cancer Society, the term which will take place on January twenty-eighth. So just in a few days, that's at Kambi. It aims to raise awareness of cancer as well as raise money for the cause. The students have already raised over six sixteen hundred dollars in registration fees and their hope is to reach the goal of two thousand. So they're almost there. The event has generated a lot of interest and may even lead to the introduction of pickleball in all in the schools classes. So a nice news story and students doing some advocacy. Black Excellence Day, as we heard a little bit earlier today. On January thirteenth, Richmond School District celebrated Black Excellence Day. And this is a day to honor the history and contributions of Black Canadians. Black Excellence originated from the Civil Rights Movement in the nineteen sixty-sixties. It is homage to civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. It has become a day to stand in solidarity with Black Canadians and to celebrate their history, art, stories, achievement and joy. Approximately six hundred students from across the district participated in virtual event on the day and learned from an impressive line of Black Canadian speak. Students needed to reflect on what Black excellence means, excellence means to them. They can celebrate Black Excellence throughout the year and promoting Black excellence can support reconciliation. Recently, the Buzz Art Club at McNeil Secondary School completed their annual a-thon. The club has been running since twenty fifteen and has donated to different charities over the years, raising over fifty thousand dollars. The charity chosen for this year's event was Kent House in Vancouver. The students worked collaboratively to design, paint attic works loosely related to the chosen chair and focused on the theme of stories. Drew inspiration from social, cultural, personal and historical experiences. Scratch Juice Junior. So two and three students at Quintina Elementary School embarking on an exciting journey into the world of coding. Guided by a teacher consultant, been delving into this app Scratch Junior, discovering the possibilities of creating interact characters that could move and speak. As they have progressed through multiple lessons, their creativity and imagination have flourished as they craft their own unique stories, compete with textbooks, bubble sound effects and animated illustrations. Outdoor learning at General Colcurry Elementary School. So grade one students have been engaging in weekly outdoor learning activities in September. After returning for winter break, revisited different parts of the school's outdoor learning spaces and reflected on experiences together. The students also named the different spaces such as the Imagination Forest, the Story Tree, the Friendship Forest, Sharing Garden. "I like the Story Tree because we can also play games like Rave Spider," said one student. "Sometimes you look up, you can see nests and then you look around and you see more," added another student. To document their learning, the students created a map showing these different spaces and the memory that they have there. Some students used defined glasses to look closely at details and others worked on their own map. Digital Story Club. McKinley Primary students exploring where coding's in our world and what might be used to tell stories. They have explored digital coding structures, apps and programs, as well as non-digital strategies to code with their friends. The big learning for students has been that coding is a literacy that lives all around us. When we understand it, we can decompose it and manipulate it and use to create new and adding experiences. More than anything, when our learners code, they practice using their core competence to get the job done. Conversations about identity. So recently, an illustrator, Chiba Sterns, paid his first of three visits to home elementary school. He shared his story of growing up with mixed heritage and not seeing himself represented in children's books. This inspired him to write his own book, Mixed Critters, which is a whimsical alphabet book. On January twenty-third, Jeff Jeff returned to the school and shared his graphic novel on Being Yukiho with the intermediate classes. This compelling story about the Japanese internment features modern day characters of mixed heritage and contains ten documents retold via flashbacks from the co-authors' family history. Jeff's workshops are inspiring home students to write, draw and celebrate their diverse identity. Rubik's Cube. So over the last term, immediate students at Anderson have been learning about algorithms needed to solve a Rubik's Cube in their applied design skills, technologies, learning time. On Friday, January thirteenth, students hosted a school-wide Rubik's Cube event. They shared the Rubik's Cube learning with other students. Using a Rubik's Cube involves competencies such as communication, problem solving, spatial reasoning. And following this, five students from each intermediate class volunteered to compete in a time challenge. The school gym was full of excitement as schools came together on their school goal, building community through mathematics. I cannot have anything more stressful than in front of a school trying to figure Rubik's Cube. And Ellie Mapleman. As February approaches, students and staff at Shell Elementary are getting excited for their annualaval week. To prepare, the Mapleman came to the school to teach them about French Canadian traditions. Students learned about the process of transforming maple sap into syrup, how to play musical spoons and traditional dance dances have been performed at the Sugar Shack. The highlight of the visit was when the students got to taste real maple taffy served on a bed of snow. Wow. It was delicious. It was an educational experience that brought the schools and French speaking communities together. And Chairperson, that concludes my report. As always, I am so impressed by what's happening in our classrooms across the school district. And I'm happy to share that. Thank you.
Remember doing something like maple taffy on snow when kids. I'm glad they're still doing it. And pickleball. I gotta learn to play pickleball. Okay. Thank you. That was super interesting. Okay. And to approval of the minutes, there is a record on camera meeting of the board held Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And a record of an encamera meeting of the board held Wednesday, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. And there is a minutes of the meeting of the board Wednesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two for approval. And trustee Larson moves and Trong has second. Then any discussion? All those? Thank you. And nobody's opposed. There is no business rising and new business. Is an interesting topic. Inquiry Grants, the mid-year update from Assistant Lieutenant Braga.
Joining me this evening is District Administrator Curriculum and Assessor Douglass. As we give our update this evening, inquiry is really a foundational component of professional learning and has been a great way to harness this in deep learning experience for educators and student learners as well. And as you know, you've been supporting inquiry grants to support preparation and pedagogic practice and professional inquiry. I'm just going to ask for our slides. Right, right. As quickly received, he grants in the amount of two thousand dollars for their successful grant applicates yearly. Inquiry Grants are intended to enhance student learning while at the same time they are intended to enhance the learning culture of our district and create explicit alignment and connection of schools' learning focus as stated in school stories and to strategic priorities of the board's strategic plan, particularly strategic priorities one and two, inspire learners and equity and inclusion. Inquiry projects inspire student learners and educators as learners as they embark on their entry journeys. Inquiry projects are exited in equity and inclusion and seek to create equitable learning environments. At the district level, we intentionally bring inquiry granters together to explain and support the inquiry process as using the source of inquiry by Judy Halbert and Linda Kaiser, so the book. And you can see the source of inquiry up on the screen there. One of the key features of the spirals of inquiry model is seek student voice. This takes place as part of the scanning process in the inquiry where educators ask their students about their learning experiences and the learning environments in order to choose an area to inquire more deeply about. And in the end, if their inquiry had a difference for student learning, as well as to consider their next step as they work to continuously improve outcomes for students. In twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, there are eleven areas. Six of which are new based on feedback from educators in the district. This year, there are over four hundred educators participating in a hundred and twelve grants in three of our schools. Support for our inquiry teams involving together in our for an inaugural networking session. And inquiry teams also meet several times in small groups throughout the school year with a teacher consultant and mid-year check-in. And in late May, all area teams come together for the inquiry celebration. This year, the inquiry celebration is Thursday, May eighteenth, from three thirty to five o'clock. We hope that you will also join us at that celebration and see the results of this year's inquiry projects. And there'll be more information coming about that. And now I'm going to pass it over to District Administrator Douglas, who's going to share more details about some of the year grants that are happening this year.
Yeah. As was explained, there's a number of steps in a process that our teachers follow as they go through their inquiry cycle. Inquiry is an iterative cycle as the spiral diagram illustrated earlier. And so as we go through the cycle, we're continued check back in with our students and check back in with each other in our inquiry teams to see if what we're doing is on the right track. That's a important part of this process. What I would offer you this evening is a bit of an overview. There are eleven different areas of inquiry that teachers are exploring here with their students. And I'd like to highlight just one little piece in each of those areas. So as I threw the slides, there'll be a few quotes and those are questions and take directly from the school teams. So they'll be up there and then I'll show one of them specifically so that you get a sense of depth and breadth of the work that educators are doing in Richmond. And also so that you can see that focus, students and the student experience because there's really a very vast array of work that's being done. So there are eleven, just previewing that. So the first area that I'm highlighting is one around activating student voice. What that means is we're giving students more choice, control and opportunities for collaboration as part of their learning experience. The specific example that I want to bring to attention is from McKinney School. It's the question in the middle that, how can we engage students in reflecting on and communicating their learning while making actions to big ideas? The specific way that McKinney is looking at that is through their resource team and IP processes where they've engaged students and their families in having a greater degree of control and voice and input into that process and how that looks them at the school. In my conversations with that school, it's been a really valued and appreciated process by families. The second area I'm highlighting for you tonight are Jedi, our justice, equity, diversity and inclusion in the school and in classrooms. And the first question there is from Gilmore. And this is the third year of their inquiry into having a pride club at their school. And they also have bridged that focus to be a part of their school story, which focuses on belonging. One of the things that they are learning as they go through this multi-year process is that while the initial intention was to have students who are part of the LGBTQ two plus community have a place to go and to feel supported within the school environment that actually it's of interest to those students who are wishing to grow their allyship and inclusivity of all kinds. At times, eighty students come to their pride club activities, which is large for a school of over three hundred. We have a number of inquiry grants in the area of social learning. One of the questions, the top one is from Tom Sett. Tom Sett has been looking into the zones of regulation, which is a framework by which we give language and skills for students to support them in their own self-regulation. And having a consistency of that language across classrooms and across this community is really important for students to success with those skills. Tom Sett decided to create magnets with some of that language on it. And they shared those magnets with parents at their conference time so that parents got to learn that language of self relation and then take them at home for own home context so that they would be having that consistency of language support at home and at school. Reconciliation had a number of grants as well this year. And so many schools who chose to explore this area of inquiry have based their conversations on this book, Lewa by Joe Cronin. And if you had a chance to look at it's An Act for Reconciliation and Anti-Racistification and it is being read graciously across the district by educators. And specifically, one of the, chapter five in the book has been picked up by a lot of our school communities where it talks about how to live and embody the First Peoples' principles of learning in the school. What actions can you take? And Joe Cronin does a lovely job of asking us of questions for our own reflection because there isn't one win way, one checklist really about having that base in your school context involving the people pool and community. And so these are ongoing conversations that are happening at many, many schools through inquiry grant. Heading in a different direction, we have a number of inquiry freeze into formative assessment. So formative assessment is supporting students in understanding their own learning and their progress with their own learning as they go through and it's their learning sequence. And that's different from a summit assessment, which would be like a rap card. So in our formative assessment, the photo up there, I know you don't need to read it, it matter, but those are called learning maps. And so that essentially maps out for students the learning journey proficiency will look like. And so students know that in the work that they're doing, this is what this is what their success can look like and where they need to go next, next in learning. So a number of our secondary schools. So a number of our secondary schools, schools specifically are looking into how they can use learning apps to better support student success with their learning and that feeling of. In planning for instruction, the one of these inquiries set, this is quite a creative one. That first one at the top of the screen is actually two schools. And these two schools have gotten together to look at how you could build an inter-school community of musicians. And so there are the teachers as well as students. They all get together across the community and play together and learn from each other in that kind of real life position kind of as opposed to in a classroom environment. They're wanting to look at there is how we can grow a different way of learning music. And that's really authentic as students consider a future career or a future hobby or future interest musical community. Our library learning comments, we always have a lot of engagement from our teacher libraries in and evolving their spaces to better serve their school communities. Specific example I want to share with you too is from Rower. And Cora is looking at how they can develop and diversify their collection to support indigenous and promote student learning. A big focus here for them is literacy skills include promoting the oral storytelling. And so you can see they've got a bunch of different materials that they've brought in as a way of helping students interact with those materials and with books and with stories to interpret stories, but to also tell their other own as a way to build a language acquisition. We see this type of thing happening across a number of our libraries as we support students for learning both in English. Learning environments and spaces, there's also a lot of students in this area. And on the table there, it was reminding me actually of the photos earlier from Curry. And you can see that they've got a bunch of sort of real life materials. And so there's magnifying glasses and some feeds and some different materials that you would use outdoors. And Steve's, they're looking at how they can build a community across their programs. So Steve's has of course Montessori program is the neighborhood program. And they're finding that through having cooperative rules or challenges that the students can use these different materials that are connected to and work cooperatively and together both across grades as well as programs in order to solve these or you know, understand what that challenge is. And so the inquiry been around like, how can we use these types of reels and these types of launches to sort of overcome some of those barriers see in schools around class, what class you're in and what grade you're in, what program you're in. Next, we have numerous and you highlight the example that highlighting is the first one from Anderson. And then the Rubik's Cube example was a great one of how they're looking into the inquiry of building community amongst their staff, students and their families in order to support numeracy. And again, this is across programs as this is a track school. Part of their exploration includes growing best practices for include learning, including use of visual. And again, that theme of calm language, which for all of learners, so that families are learning that the language of numeracy as alongside their children as they go through both the neighborhood program and French immersion program. Outdoor learning and land-based pedagogy. A number of schools are looking at their outer bases and how their students interact and feel connected to those outdoor spaces. Specifically, Ferris has a court space. You've been looking at how they can use that space and design that with the input of a specific student with complex needs to better meet needs in the school environment. And to also provide ways for them to connect other students in ways that work for them. And so this is a co-design process that the school has undertaken with a specific student and some peers in order to build that sense of belonging and action. Finally, our pillars of literacy. So our pillars of literacy is a comprehensive literacy resource developed by our future consultants here in Richmond. It's available on our portal in French and English and is comprehensive through grade five, kindergarten grade five. And a number of our students are looking at how can find learning experiences using the pillar literacy to promote belonging and engagement as well as language acquisition for all learners in both French and the neighborhood program and English. Through the different activities and ways of teaching lines through through this resource. And so the civic example I've highlighted here is Bridge where they're looking at really bringing joy and literacy and the joy of being able to communicate in all of those different ways that make us literate learners alive to a greater degree in their students.
Well, that's a really high level summary of a lot of the inquiry that's going on in the district. And it was really hard to choose which project to highlight because there's so much creativity and engagement and interest with free grants. And I hope you can see the collaboration that it supports. It's a testament to our educators and our passion coming through in the inquiry projects. And as I said, I hope you'll have some time on May the 18th to come and see the results of their work at the celebration. And we'll be sending that information to you once we have our low-key cured and all those details. But we are happy to take any questions that you might.
Trustee Larson.
Thank you. Oh my gosh, this is just. It's learning and learning and learning and learning and all the different type of learning and how to learn and teachers learning and children learning and families learning. It's just makes me want to go back to school or work at school like that is fascinating to me. And the richness, I I feel feels like we're stepping a little bit from learning how to do school. It's learning to learn and learn about yourself. And I think that's preparing just moving forward at a time. Then they get 12 and they just decide they want to do this is just so exciting. So I don't have any questions other than I would love to attend something for a whole day to hear more because this is everything we do is right. Like this is, thank you. Can't help.
Trustee Belusa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like the two words inquiry and grant. So like the the purpose, like this activated student voice and pillars of literacy, especially pillars of financial literacy. It's possible, I just tried to inquire and I'd like to hear your comments. Is it possible in terms of beating activated student voice like student empowerment? That area or we can I students to help them speak their own voices? Like we know we have in council, like Supreme Student Council in the district where they could promote, like for example, having you know, news where the students could really come up with their ideas on how to develop their individual potential. So that we will also be guided on how to work and help in terms of that regard as related by the preamble of the college. And secondly, in terms of expressing single political views. I know policy is sometimes boring, but with giving them the chance to express their views. I there's a risk in our school, right? You know, giving them the opportunity to really air out what are some of the views that would also help us? I guess accomplish stated in strategy number one and strategic planning number two. So by giving them, you know, we give you report terms student empowerment. We will, we will, we will have the chance and the opportunity, a member of the board to learn enough of them. And so many issues they can, they can probably raise by giving them empowerment to air out their, you know, their views. Thank you.
I think that's one of the reasons we use the spirals inquiry process. And because inquiry model really asks you ask students their point of view and share their experiences, their learning and their environments. And the example of the bike club, for example, so they can talk about social issues and inquire with them also about how that how that change in the process in their school, the learning environment in their school had affected them. Because we also asked the question, you know, you've made enough of a difference. And by asking his questions about learning, that's how it caters to determine their next steps in terms of how we made it different. Our students, do they feel they have a safe place to learn? Do they have that sense of belonging? They feel like they have a voice in their school community. And through what they tell us, teachers design their inquiries around.
Just to follow up, Madam Chair, the second thing is the grant. If the student pursue that that kind of work or project and they can receive a grant where they could invite speakers, you know, along literature or other issues. So that they have the opportunity really like we are doing here now to govern themselves and express their views that, you know, we will be able to know what's in their mind in terms of their individual potential.
These grants that we're talking about this evening are in particularly grants for teachers. So they are grants for teachers to develop an inquiry around. But as we've said, they work with their students and that looks different depending on the age of students. So in secondary schools, we have specific clubs that started because students have come forward. Example, I can think of indigenous languages about Stephenson London where students had an expert desire to learn their indigenous language and bring students into that. And that is part of an inquiry grant, for example.
Trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you Assistant Superintendent for this report. I just have quick questions. I see that there are quite a few grant areas in the 2022, 2023 year. I guess that speaks to the six of the Indian programs. Graham, can you tell us that whether this expansion is indeed due to the demand on these different categories and issues?
Yeah, we've through the sort of the journey of very grants in the district. We've tried to be responsive to what educators are telling us. And as talked about, the process of collaborating through your grant is with teacher consultants who supports the work, supports the gray team. And through conversations and through an inquiry, teachers pursuing a different idea might emerge. Also connected to what schools are focusing on in their school focus and the strategic priorities that have now been in place for a couple of years. Different areas started to become alive and teachers have questions, so they want to pursue inquiry. So in order to support that, the inquiry committee, which is a district committee, stakeholders from RTA and RINRAS talk about what the needs are and this year expanded actually quite a bit this year to include those needs and seen quite a bit of uptake in those areas. Kind of exciting to have new area inquiry happening.
It is indeed very exciting, just and the fact that it is needs based and just it's suited to whatever needs are in our schools. I think that that is great. My second question is, do you know whether or not a higher uptake either of the two categories in terms of our inquiry grants?
In terms of inspired owners or equity inclusion? I don't have that information in front of me, do I?
I do.
Okay.
We have I'd say there's a little bit more uptake in the inspired learners. One of the big, one of the big, there's two areas in inspired learners that have a very high number of grant applicants with or grant recipients, which is learning environments and then the learning or the library, library incomes. So those two areas are typically areas that are popular for grants as people are wanting to explore different ways that they can support of learning environments and be responsive to student needs. And so because if you consider how many classrooms there are in the district and as those different teachers see and hear about, oh, you've made these changes to their learning environment and having this kind of feedback from some students, I want to do that too. And that kind of spread and grows. And so there's, there tends to be a lot for that reason. However, would say also that the two new, two of the new areas Jedi and truth and reconciliation also have a lot of engagement as those are areas that have come forward from students want to have a voice, wanting to have those conversations in schools and from teachers wanting to know, you know, how to embed that in a really meaningful way.
It's inspiring to hear. So and again, thank you.
Trustee Good.
Question, just a comment. I'm fortunate enough to attend some of the inquiries presentations and I'm always kind of struck. I mean, I've been to some of the little kids fires. And it's like you can see the same level of excitement in terms of come see my booth, come and see my booth. And it's so neat to see that kids and the teacher. And it's, you know, even nicer for the fact that, you know, shows that the teachers, you know, still want more things and the things that they're about. And yeah, the parallels between the two are quite, quite close.
More questions and trustee.
Well, I just want to know that the inquiry team, the grant team is the team is a search from the provincial grant or side the school ship or run the success program in the school district?
The funds for these are supported by the board. It's budget through board and the teams, school teams that are together based on, there's an application that they fill and come together as a team to fill in their application around their inquiry of the year. This should have a few inquiry grants as district minister just described that are a couple of schools working together. And that's a new area that we are exploring as teachers have said, you know, like to talk about music program, for example, and bringing musicians together from across the district.
It's just for the older school, just like an immature school, school. See that's some more, yeah, at the computer thing to grant. So I just thought you said that's the student why others are school. Don't have this program on all square.
It's a choice for teachers to apply. And so we have 43 schools with grants. Some schools have one grant focusing on, some schools have more than than one grant. It's also dependent on the size, of course, of course, some very small staffs. And other schools have quite large staffs, so they have more grants.
Just depend on the teacher's interest.
That's right. Thank you.
Well, there aren't any more comments. I want to thank you for the presentation. And I, I think it's all, I mean, obviously teachers want to. And, and it looks like they're really enjoying the learning and they're inspired by learning. And that leads to inspired students. And I remember, you know, a few years ago, there was trustees with the B C School Trustees Association were really focused on, you know, how do we engage students and inspire them? Why I wish in school now? Because it's not just the teacher holding all the information and and feeding it out. It's more, it's all collaborative with the students. It's more, it's, it's all collaborative with the the students. You know, really involve their own, their own learning as well, just and being guided. So I think it's fantastic. And and the Nick uh, collaboration. And so I did attend band concert at Blair. And I believe there was, um, the secondary school teacher was collaborating with the elementary school teacher, uh, uh, band director at Blair and they, you know, were bringing together. So um, I think it's just, it's great. And um, for all your work and and the presentation, I think we're all all inspired.
Thank you.
Trustees needed an inquiry.
We appreciate the board's support.
Yeah, since we've instituted that, that in very round, round, I mean, the uptake has been amazing. Thank you. Second kind of opportunity for questions from the public on on dates. I just, are there any questions from the Zoom? Yang and none from the gallery. There, okay, okay, meeting committee, so audit city trustee Yang.
Nothing, nothing to report.
You'd have a meeting, meeting.
Meeting was uh, on March twenty, oh, sorry, January twenty.
Okay, great. Thank you. Education and committee, uh, there is trustee Larson, and I believe she has a couple of recommendations.
I do. I'll read the recommendation. Pardon me, no, it's in front of me, that the Richmond Richmond is the one for Equity and Action Project Project. That the region Board of Education directs staff proceed with with the recommendations contained in the in the Equity in Action Project Report. Um, this was presented to at the Education Committee meeting last Wednesday. And I know the dis dis equity scan was initiated by staff in over of twenty twenty and completed in the late spring of twenty twenty two. And it's, it's a full report. We we had most of our trustees there, there were two not able to get at that point. But if, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, I should, um, I just put a recommendation forward. I, uh, yeah, I've never done done this before. Oh, my God. So and I have a move.
You've read the recommendation.
Yes.
And, oh, I'm looking, moved the motion, I'm looking for a second.
Okay.
See Hamago Gucci, and then you can speak to.
Oh, I'm brave.
It's okay.
No, no.
Problem.
Learning. Um, just, just to to um, make it so if there's, is it okay for me to, if there's any question, question, comments? We just Ms. McMillan to to respond if if there are.
You trust us these how many questions on recommendation or report, uh, trustee agent.
Yeah, I know we've received the report already, board. Because recommendations kind of funny coming from a trustee, but uh, it's just approved.
From from educate, no.
But we've already as a full board seen the report. Earlier, so uh, just a question around uh, consider transition new indigenous education advisory. It says consider, who will, who will make that decision?
That's certainly, should the recommendations pass, we explore the options. Currently, we do, we do have Aboriginal enhancement advisory. That group has has been part of the original enhancement advisory committee with the report that had continued on until till June of this past year. And then looking at the evolution and the different opportunities that arise through the equity in action. We would bring that consideration as to to the benefit of how it would fit into new structure. Sure, as an advisory and certain in terms of reference, what would, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question correctly, but in in terms of um, the terms of reference and the purpose that advisory group has halted of a report as we move with the recommendations of this.
Yeah, yeah, and the only I would say is um, uh, we have the Aboriginal Enhancement Committee with Board Committee. Um, and understanding would be that this would replace that. Yes. Perhaps. And so I would want it more to establish um, the transition, not as as a board member, as a board commit, commit for it to continue as in a new direction. So I I mean, you take that under advisement, but I think it would would be board decision as to. Um, and I really want to establish that right away. Um, so whatever process that is, I guess for me, it's a red word, consider, um, rather than establish.
And that's something absolutely, as we move forward with this process, we would look to take actions. And I would be, as as a fellow learner with trustee Larson, the next step, step, moving forward in in that group.
I was just gonna say, you know, that 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 was the the rendations from this equity and action project to to consider.
Yes.
But um, the board is, that was a recommendation. And so this recommendation now, now it's, um, you proceed, the recommendation are contained in the report, so.
I understand, it's a sitter.
Yeah.
That established.
I think we're saying we're not considering any anymore. We're moving ahead because I I checked on this today. So yes, that would be approval of the advisory committee. Mr. Superintendent.
That was my understanding of the interpretation of this, yes, unless us trustees had a concern that that would would be our interpretation of it.
As well.
Hey, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, trustee Yang.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chairperson, and I think to to justice's point, uh, does say in the package that um, uh, quotes, the Equity in Action Team is recommending that this district transition to a formalized in this education advisory committee with clear, clear terms of reference. So I think that's uh, what it's recommending. Um, and I certainly appreciate that because that's another uh, avenue for stakeholders and our students to to to, you know, continue our work, work. Uh, in in terms of truth and reconciliation, um, just a few, few comments. You know, reading this report is so, like, like, it gave me a lot of actual action. At where we are in our district in terms of um, our work to on equity and truth and reconciliation. Um, I think takeaway for me is that that we have uh, some ways to go, to go to to make sure that students are achieving their full potential. And and feel as welcomed as they can in our school, in our district, district cases. Um, so jumping through the pa- package, um, I mean, these are just some of the examples, but um, uh, there are families that continue to face, um, you know, stories of racism and encounters of racism. Um, you have, and and this is another example, uh, when asked how many staff are um, incorporating indigenous content in the work. Those, those who have been stayed, I think fifty eight, eight percent of rated themselves three or higher on a scale from one to five. Um, and another example is that, um, you know, we got, uh, when when asked to indigenous students, whether they think that they have visible representation of their own culture, culture and spaces. Uh, we have fifty three percent that's yes, but when you do the math, it's forty seven percent that said no. So it's, I I think it's just so sobering for us as decision makers to acknowledge, you know, we have ways to go, ways to go. And, um, you know, you know, just need to support the work and that's why I'm support this amendment, uh, this motion. Because um, these recommendations, they all are in line with what we set out in our strategic plan. Which to move forward and like I said, you know, create that more in welcoming and environment. So, um, and I think, you know, just reading the surveys, it's very, very, um, it it gives me much of what what the student are experiencing. And that's why, um, you know, the job is all is to also collect more data qualitative or quantitative. And that just has everybody, everybody of a better pick of what what students and all stakeholders are facing. So, so, thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Um, trustee Felisa.
Thank you, Madame Chair, for the purposes of listening public. Uh, I'd like to summarize the why we should consider this and what are the challenges or barriers that we're going to be having on this particular recognition.
Start by naming that the full report is part of the public package, so certainly any member of the public can read the report. Um, that and including the recommendation for for the equity in action project. In terms of moving forward, I already, the recommendations, as you read through the report and as trustee has mentioned, in the centering of voices of our students and families, as well as the experiences of our staff, have really led to some very um, strong recommendations, help us move forward, forward as a district. There's, there's been a deal of work ongoing through our district for several years. This really helps us, um, important information and data to really, um, or in a really intentional way on specific areas as we continue uh, the journey towards in truth reconciliation and in supporting our learners and supporting indigenous learners and their fam- family. What we want to make sure we do as we move forward and the advice and also be uh, important in this is checking in. We want to make sure that that the work that we are doing is having, and this speaks actually to inquiry grant work as well. Are we making enough of a difference? And so I think the important, important piece is ensuring that as forward with our actions that we are checking in, that we are writing back. And we are acting with indigenousness and families as they will tell us how we're doing, doing in achieving our goals.
Uh, trustee Bang.
So I just can say I appreciate for the start of spam years to make this project, this equity as a project. So we can see the package that the page one to six, sixteen, five. So it's a whole for people to learn. And as I say, that you you just away from the chair or just the staff. So a lot of uh, teacher or and stuff, not not more, lower the importance of the tree and the culture of the indigenous. So this is bring all that for everyone to learn and the detail for people to get the knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm. Any more questions? Uh, this has just been, um, I guess a labor of love, but it's also, you know, it's been been a big project and um, we did have a work, working group, uh, that was, was the, um, trustee, sorry, said it, but it, but their work is coming to an end. And and so it is time to move ahead and in this report is um, is what was needed. And the innovation in it to move on with all those recommendations and and to move ahead with the uh, the, the indigenous committee that that will be forming. So um, I really think, yes, I really think, you know, it's, the recommendations are so important here. Uh, and I think um, superintendent that think a little more succinct with his uh, comments than I have.
No, I I appreciate.
Looking through my report and trying to grab things out of it.
Not at all. Thank you. I guess what I wanted to point out is that the Aboriginal Education Enhancement Advisory Committee was struck a number of years ago. Uh, based, based on what our knowledge was at the time around indigenous peoples' issues. And since then, we have learned a great deal. Thankfully, we've, we've learned a deal about that and we know much more about we need to do much better, better. And what what's proposed here, I will, I will set up a structure uh, that will allow, allow as a school to district move forward in collaboration with our stakeholders, with our families. Uh, indigenous students, um, really to entice our efforts and and get, get where much closer to where we could be. Because as I agree with you, we have a lot of work to do. Um, I would, I would also like to note at the same time that a significant amount of work has passed on in the school district. We have a very effective indigenous success team that works so closely uh, with our students and families. And I think, uh, read the report carefully, you will see that they've been, they've been highly successful in that regard. We need to continue our work. It is a large part of the work of the board moving for the next few years. So um, I I would certainly encourage the board to strongly support that. Thank you.
Oh, um, the Aboriginal enhancement, I think about because because we had Aboriginal enhancement agreement was just what I was trying to say. And um, we did renew it a few years ago, but that's coming to an end. And so now we'll be um, moving ahead with more strategic work from the Aboriginal Advisory Committee, so.
Cool for the work that that has done.
Yes.
That group in the.
And there's been lots. Thank you very much. Are there, are there any more answers? We move, move ahead with the recommendation that has been moved in second, second, I'll call the question, all those favor. No, no one is opposed and the motion is carried and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Your work and the work of everyone else that has been involved on this project.
Thank you.
I think I'm sticking around and just for the next.
And trustee Larson, you have a second.
I have another recommendation regards to the Aspen Learning Center Program Review. And the recommendation is that the Richmond Education direct staff to proceed with the recommendations contained in the in the Aspen Learning Center Program Review.
And I'm trustee Yang, you're moving the motion in second, I'm seconding, then moved by trustee Larson. So trustee Larson, do you wanna, wanna?
Just again, uh, fulsome question and opportunities at education, but there were a few people missing, so there. Thank you for, thank for, for.
Okay, questions, uh, trustee.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not on the education committee, so so I am not a rep, rep, so I don't, yeah. And yeah, I can, I can, um, but this has been a long time, lots of discussion with with the full board. So I'm, you know, well abreast of what what this means, where we're going. And I really support the recommendations and and thank you for the work and staff's work to get us to move to the to the next, so thank you.
Pass that on, there's been a large, large number of people very hard at this, including the Aspen staff.
Yes, appreciate. Any other questions, uh, Maguchi.
First, I'm really pleased that we are evaluating or looking at the programs because, um, you know, I have worked in this field, field for years. So often, like, this is a very challenging group of kids and 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 students, and it's a challenging program to operate. Uh, and so the fact that we're continuing, continuing, sort of looking at it and just sort of talking away our back pockets and forgetting about, I think, is 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 X. Uh, one of the concerns that popped up when I read the report is recommendation around that it would be nice to have about, you know, eight or nine students, you know, eight, eight students in a program. You know, one of the challenges I've found of this is what these kids get this kind of program. And it's such an enriched, rich environment, such good teaching. It's hard for them to leave because they're doing so, and so, but you only have a finite amount, amount of space, classroom and resource. Uh, was I, was there anything in the report that talked about, about you deal with going numbers? Because because the more success you have, the more people are gonna have knocking on the door, which is, it's a nice problem in a sense, but um.
Yeah, absolutely. A part of the report also includes really looking at building a, a strong and well articulated ended entry, well as exit criteria for the program. And certainly, you know, as watching Aspen over the last number of years, the consideration and the work that's done at the school level. Um, and and really, really worth those school teams before we consider other options is a big piece here because there is fantastic work to work in our, working our schools. And then for students for whom, despite everyone, everyone, Stafford, including that child, that this isn't the right fit right now, building that criteria for entry also will, will help. Know that that's the right, this is the right fit, the right environment. That's something that we've, we've working on as well as I think a piece, because Aspen, although it's been around for about five, five years now, hasn't been around for twenty five. And so we're really learning, learning to explore, um, to move into different, different aspects out of the program. Certainly within students, with at Aspen, there are students who are in the main school at different times, students who are um, working within the ACT program at different times. And so I, so I, to your point of the the number, there's two pieces to it, and it is how do we ensure that we have provided incredibly, incredible opportunities in a student environment? And for that very small number of children who, for whom Aspen is the right, that we have that process for entry, but also continuing to look at opportunities. And then the last piece, that's also in the report is certainly looking at the Aspen learning space, space itself. And although they recommend a mandate for eight students, as that evolved, we're timed, that may give us more information.
Yeah, I guess I'd say, like, say, working in the field and, um, I've I've had fortune of having some of mine be in the end. And I can't speak enough about it, about the people and the program and, uh. And then, as I said, my own concern concerns that it's. Walls are only, you can't walls and and, uh. Anyway, I'm glad we're we're looking into that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, to trustee Wong?
I just want to like that if student is a this this time.
Hmm.
That they have, uh. What is for they a week?
Yes, they end school full time.
Thank you.
Uh, trustee Felisa.
I like the 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 program, especially that it deals with the the needs of these special students. And. What I'd like to ask is the. In terms of sustainability. Of the program. Uh, do we have, do we have enough demand in our school district? Do we have enough resources? Knowing that that, uh, we need spe- special educators. For this purpose. And, uh, in terms of of the budget facilities. Uh, and what are the the challenges that you are facing now? In terms of barriers?
Sure. And I and I actually want to one comment back to, um, trustee Wong's comment for when I see students attend full time, they have that have that opportunity. I do want to be be clear that for students. Working with their home teams and working with their families, they may be building towards that, depending on their need, but the opportunity Aspen itself runs full days, days a week. So I just want to clarify that. And speaking back to your point, um. One of the things that Aspen was created was to address a need, um, for for a very, very tiny percentage of students in our district. Who need some more intense intensive supports and structures and working within the main school environment wasn't wasn't quite the match right now. And so that actually Aspen, the creation of Aspen actually was designed to create and meet a need and need remove a barrier. Uh, for children who might might, uh, struggling in different ways, despite their very, very best efforts and the incredible efforts of their team. Uh, moving forward, Aspen, it's been very well supported in our district. And certainly as we as we to, if there were any additional requests, we would would process to to do that. I I think I also want to speak to the fact that within all of our elementary and secondary schools. There are a number of children with a variety of complexities, amazing, uh, young people, and the school teams work very creative and with the resources they have to create great experiences. So I just want to highlight that in the large number of students in our district and the the very small percentage for whom Aspen is the right fit fit. There is also a great deal of great work happening with other children, um, across our district schools.
There any other questions? I was gonna say, you know, I remember, um, when we, uh, created the Arrington Learning Center. Which is similar for elementary school age students. And, um, we had to scramble to put budget together, and there were many people that came together and it's it's a beautiful. Um, place for our young people that really need it, and Aspen was another another great need.
Hmm.
And and so I thought I think, um. Take away. We always find a way. Um, are there enough resources? Well, we're always always asking. That's our job to advocate for for those resources, but. We find a way every time, so. Um, I'm Lee. Um, so further this review and it's very helpful and yes, I'm definitely in court, but. Um, the motion has been moved and seconded, though I'm going going to call at this point all those in favor. And no one's opposed, so congratulations and thank you. Thanks so much. And, uh, our young people, that program will. Okay, uh. And, um. I just want to know, know there are some minutes. Um, September fourteenth. Thank you. trustee Larson and. Facilities and thing, uh, we trustee Hamaguchi.
Hey, thank you. Minutes of the meeting on October third are attached for admission. Meeting will on Wednesday, January fourth. Next meeting starts for Wednesday, February first at four thirty P M. Thanks.
And, um, sorry, I pulled up the wrong recommendation. So it's my turn for the committee. Oh, finally legal, I'm sort.
I have two recommendations.
Do do.
Okay, first recommendation in, whereas the Board of Education of Statistic Thirty Eight, it isn't for expenses incurred by trustees. In the discharge of duties, be it resolved in accordance with the School Act. The Board of Education's in school this thirty eight approves trustees' expenses paid during the three month period September. Ending in September thirtieth, twenty twenty two in the amount of eight hundred and seventy seventy dollars, and I move that.
Okay, I'm going to second her. Trustee Wong. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay. And then, and I have another recommendation as we did in the December meeting. Uh, whereas the Board of Education School District Thirty Eight Richmond is paying for for expense incurred. By the trustees in discharge of their duty, be it resolved, that in accordance with the School Act. The Board of Education of S D Thirty Eight approves those trust expenses paid during the three. Month period and ended December thirty first, twenty twenty two in the amount of five thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars and eighty eight. So moved.
Um, one second intended by Tony Yang. A discussion. All the favor. Thank you.
Very. And our next meeting is February fifteenth at at. Thank you.
Now it's my turn. Policy Committee. Uh, I have two recommendations. Um. The first one is, uh. Uh, the mandation, um. Is that the committee remands to the Board of Education. That the revised shall draft a policy one on one and propose new regulation one on one R. Currently referred to as goals and objectives be referred for stakeholder input process. For the the period of Jan- January twenty sixth, March sixth, uh, two thousand and twenty twenty three. I'm looking for a second. Trustee Yang, thank you. Um, so this, uh. Policy one on one, um. Their initial draft, uh. Uh, policy committee and. Uh, was shared with, um. Members of, uh, the pub, uh, party committee. Uh, December twelfth and. Back was shared and because there for incorporated into next draft after the policy regulation and. So, um, we are feeling that this now can move into the, uh, stakeholder. Input process and. And, uh. So we're feeling it's ready to go. This policy, the goals and objectives in a major overhaul, and I'm. I'm not sure you want to speak to that, um, Superintendent Robinson in any way.
I I just like to say that the the current policy is quite outdated, I refer so much, uh. Antiquated, I would say, uh, planning policy on behalf of the board that hasn't really reflected the current practice, practice from time. So we've taken it through policy committee media numbers. It's actually been two, three times, lots of really good feedback from stakeholders. That's been incorporated, and I think now it's ready to go for first.
And it, yeah, it's also, you know, we now have a different process. Uh, strategic plan. Set of, you know, some of the processes, so, um, that policy was was highly outdated and. Hope for the new, the new. So, um, is there any questions regarding? This motion? Okay, so I'm going to call a question. All is in favor. And the motion is. And, um, I'm also. Bringing, uh, a notice of motion. Uh, in accordance with that's board policy two oh four, great courage, vision of regulation. Uh, this is a notice of motion that a recommendation be presented to the February twenty second, thousand twenty three. Public meeting of Board of Education to approve. Um, the rise policy section seven hundred facilities phase two. And, uh, policy has. And, um. Back and forth for for quite some and and so, uh, I'm bringing that note, note option to the next. Um, for meeting in February. So. That's it, it, uh, for me, and the minutes of the of the meeting, October third and December twelfth are attached. For information and a meeting also held on January twenty third, and the next meeting. Is scheduled for Monday, February thirteenth at eleven A M. And there is no correspondence, uh. Board, Board Committee representative reports, um, council board liaison. Reading was January eleventh. And, uh, there were a few few things discussed. Um, there were some some questions. Uh, from the councilors and. Um. We also just discussed with, um, with with between the board and. Count, which I can share more about later, so. Um. I thought it, I'm looking for a motion to turn trust rusty. Second, trustee Larson, all those in favor? Motion is carried. My, my, my.